Commissioner Cochran, please feel free to start when ready.
Okay, yeah, I didn't hear any of the music, so I wasn't sure if it did. Good, good evening. My name is Jerry Cochran. I'd like to call the City of Pasco Planning Commission meeting to order. I'd like to welcome all those in attendance this evening and ask you to join me in reciting the Bledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to begin tonight's meeting by asking the clerk or someone, if we can here, Kristen, someone to call roll call.
I'm here. Rosa Torres.
Present.
Mitchell Moffett.
Present.
Kim Lerman.
Present.
Abel Campos.
Present.
Dana Crutchfield. I thought she was online.
I think she is, but I don't think her mic works.
Yeah. Rachel Teal.
Present.
Jerry Cochran.
Present.
Mr. Chair, there are seven members present. We do have a quorum.
Excellent, thank you. The Planning Commission is an advisory board made up of volunteers appointed by the city council. The purpose of the Planning Commission is to provide recommendations to city council regarding changes to the city's comprehensive plan, land use updates, block grant allocations, and zoning code. The Planning Commission is tasked with considering the long-term growth and development of the community, the impact of land use, decisions on community livability, economic opportunity, housing affordability, public services, and the environment. I'd like to remind the audience that tonight's proceedings are being broadcast live, I think they are, maybe not, on the city of Pasco's Facebook page under and on Charter Cable PSC Channel 191. They'll be rebroadcast several times in the next month. The meeting is also being recorded, and you can watch it on the city of Pasco's website, which is pasco-wa.gov. Click on the video on demand link and make your selection of the meeting you want to watch there. At this time, please silence your cell phones or prevent distractions or interruptions from our meeting. For those present this evening, when you're given the opportunity to address the commission, please, there is no podium, but we will ask you to speak also for the commissioners, since we are not in person and we don't have our little red light microphones. Please use the hand raise feature. If you look in your screen, it's down in the lower left-hand corner, and it says, there's a raise my hand feature where it says react. And one of the one you can select is raise my hand. That way we can see who would like to speak, and I can call on folks that way. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I need to remind the audience that planning commission and the planning commission, the Washington state law requires public meetings like the one being held this evening, not only to be fair, but also to appear to be fair. In addition, Washington state law prohibits planning commission members from participating in discussions or decisions in which the member may have a direct interest or may be either benefited or harmed by the planning commission decision. An objection to any planning commission member hearing any matter on tonight's agenda needs to be aired at this time or will be waived. First of all, are there any planning commission members that would like to declare regarding any of the items on the agenda? I see no hands, hear no voices, so I'll let the record show none declared. Second, is there anyone in the audience? We really don't have an audience. So I'm going to go ahead and say there's none that's declared from an audience perspective either. We as a planning vision value your input. It helps us understand the issues more clearly and make better decisions to the recommendations to the city council. Furthermore, in many cases, your would here at the planning commission meeting is your only opportunity to get facts and opinions placed on the official record the city council used to make his decision. I encourage you to take advantage of this opportunity. Our first item tonight on the agenda is the approval of meeting minutes from October 19th, 2023. These minutes were mailed out, emailed out, and provided, I think, delivery to our homes ahead of time. I trust you had the opportunity to take a look at these, and I would entertain a motion to approve the meeting minutes. I'd also entertain any discussion on the meeting minutes. Go ahead and come off mute or raise your hand if you'd like to make a motion. I think we're, you know, I see both. I see three folks. I see Kim, Commissioner Lerman has her hand up and Dana Crutchfield as well as Abel, so. Commissioner Lerman, do I, do I see that as a move on your part for the, to approve the meeting minutes? Go ahead and come off.
Yes, Commissioner Lerman, I moved to approve the October 19th, 2023 meeting minutes, so red.
Excellent. Do I have a second? Commissioner Crutchfield, I see your hand up. I could make the assumption that's a second, but I can't hear you on your microphone. If you could try to speak.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Is that a second?
Yes, it is, sir. A second to the motion, please.
Thank you very much. It's been moved by Commissioner Lerman and seconded by Commissioner Crutchfield. All those in favor say aye. Why don't you just go ahead and put your hand up if you are in favor? Okay. It looks like we have, okay, the only hand I don't have is Commissioner Lerman, so all those, oh, there we go. We have unanimous approval of the meeting minutes, so let the record show that the meeting minutes were unanimously unanimously approved. Go ahead and take your hands down if you can. All right, we do not have any bulk business. We do not have any public hearings. Our items on the agenda night are really specifically around other business. We have no workshop items, and our first other business item is a request for code amendment regarding overnight trucking habitation, and I assume Director Gonzalez will be giving us the scoop on that.
Good evening, commissioners, and I will be actually providing an introduction. I'd like to introduce the planning commission and the members of the public out there watching us online. Introduce you all to the city of Pasco, new senior planner Joey Winter, who joined the city department in late 2023. We are excited to have Joey, and Joey will be leading the, the item under other business number eight for the commission this evening.
Welcome, Joey.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, and I look forward to working with all you. It's a shame that we couldn't get together in person tonight. I think the snow got in the way of that, but look forward to seeing you in person in the near future, and I apologize. I don't know if I'm on camera or not. I don't know where to look for the camera, so it's
We can see you.
Right up there. Got it. Well, I, I look forward to working with you on many items in the future. The first item tonight, which is on the agenda, is a request from an applicant for the planning commission to develop a potential recommendation for a text amendment to allow a trucking-related use. Now, this use is not currently described in any way in Title 25 of Pasco Municipal Code, the zoning code. Staff looked at this. We have a narrative from the applicant which was provided. We had discussions with the applicant. That narrative is in your packet, but essentially what it came down to from a staff standpoint is that this does not fit under any listed use currently within the zoning code. Some of the similar uses that we looked at were things like a gas station, maybe you think of a Love's when you think of trucking, where the primary use is fueling the vehicle and provides a service. There's also the potential to look at it as sort of like a parking lot or a truck yard, which are both uses that are included in Pasco Municipal Code. But the primary difference between those uses and what would be contemplated by planning commission under this use is the the purpose of a truck yard or parking lot is to park an empty vehicle and leave the site. This would be a use that serves the trucking community. There's a description of it in your packet, which was provided by the applicant. Certainly don't want to put any words into their mouth when describing what it is, but essentially it comes down to providing a gated, secure area for the trucking industry to reserve a spot and have their vehicle come into this, into that lot, and then provide a place to habitate the vehicle or sleep in the vehicle overnight, and then provide associated amenities, be it laundry, security, showers, things like, like that. So the planning commission does have the authority to initiate an open record hearing to potentially develop a recommendation for a text amendment, which would add this use to Pasco Municipal Code and consider what all that comes with it, what, what zones it's appropriate in, what use standards could potentially be on that. That's down the road. I think what's before you tonight is just, we're looking for guidance on whether you have interest in initiating that process, and we would come back in, in the future with a workshop to fully consider the item. Two more notes for your consideration before I turn it back over to the chair. The Pasco Municipal Code does allow all uses not otherwise prohibited by law within the I-2 and I-3 districts. So a use like this could currently locate within one of those zones, just if it wanted, needed to be anywhere else within the city, that's a different zoning district, that would require this text amendment. And then additionally, Mr. Chair, we do have a representative was going to be here in person from the applicant. I believe he is on the Zoom call or on the webinar. So if the planning commission chooses, the applicant is available, if you would like to have them speak. And with that, I look forward to working with you on all items going forward, and I'll turn it back over to you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I don't see anybody other than the commissioners and staff on the Zoom call, so maybe you want to verify if the applicant is on. I think it'd be great to hear from that applicant if they are on.
I am on. Can you hear me?
Yeah, we, I guess we just don't see you. Go ahead and maybe give us a short kind of overview. We do have your packet. Maybe give us an overview of kind of what you want to do here, and, and then we can ask questions of you as well, staff.
Yeah, so we have a little over six acres on Lewis Street between A Street and Heritage, and we recently were asked from a company down in Nashville, Tennessee to consider a truck parking up here. This is a pretty popular concept in the south, in Texas, and on the east coast. The concept is that 98% of the truckers that are on our roads today are having problems finding parking. And what this concept is, is for fleet truck parking. So it's not just for anybody, anybody just to say, hey, I want to go there, although they could. The primary audience is fleet truck parking, where they would have a easy access into the parking lot. They would stay one night. Most of the trucking we do today is they're almost like robots, and so they're told where to go, when to go, how to go. And that's, that's the market that they're going after here. We would do it in two phases if possible. We feel like it's a great a great place for it because Lewis Street will eventually become what would be considered a truck route here in Pasco, once they finish out that 40, 40 East. So we feel like it's a good place. We feel like we'd like to stage it and get even better. This company that we're working with has great goals to get these all over the nation. And they want to start with the Pacific Northwest here in Pasco. And they have plans for Seattle and other destinations here around the area, but I think it'd be great to have this here. And Lewis Street is a great opportunity with all the Amazon traffic, with the Tiger Cool Express eventually coming through there. I think this is a great location for it. We'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. So when you, I want to clarify, when you say fleet trucking, is that like the lawmarts and Amazon trucks that are all one company that are just, you know, is that what you mean by fleet trucking?
So one of the main people that is on the board of this company is the former CEO of Swift Trucking.
Right, Swift is a big one as well, yeah.
Yes.
All right, well, I'm going to go ahead and open it up for questions from the commissioners to either staff or the applicant. And again, commissioners, if you can, just raise your hand. I see Commissioner Moffett has already got his hand up, so go ahead.
Right, Commissioner Moffett here. On page four, first of all, I want to say that I think this is a great idea. I ship a lot of stuff overseas, and in so doing, I was really surprised to find out that there are only two shipping areas. One is Pasco, the other Seattle. You would think that if you're looking for a shipper, it's listed everywhere because they'll come to your house everywhere, but Pasco and Seattle are the only two actually listed. So I see the need. I just want some clarification on page four, under length of stay. And you, I realize you might not be able to do this today, but maybe in the future. So if you, if you look at that, it says the average length of stay for individuals operating this, their trucks will be limited to 24 hours. No long-term stays inside your big rig will be permitted. Well, that's, that's great to hear, but the reality is, it's very vague. So what's an, what's average, right? What's the average length of stay? And then some clarification on long-term. What's long-term? You know, to one person, it's different than to another. And then what's, what's to stop a change a year later to the long term? It, it, it's just too vague right in there. And then my follow-up question I just fired at you is time between, what's the time between phase one and two? Is, is that dependent upon business, or is there other factions that are going to be figured out in there?
I'm happy to answer that. I don't know if Jacob wants to as well, but when we discussed this with the city, the length of stay concept was that, that one of the concerns was if you stay for more than 30 days, then it becomes a lease or a rental, long-term stay. We don't want that. We don't want that at all. And so we can write it in however this, we can work with the city to determine, you know, better wording, if you will, but what our concept, we're trying to share is this is not a long-term stay. People aren't going to get to lease a space that they can park in all the time and sleep there and all of that kind of stuff. This is, this is for very short-term. Keep moving. You know, you're there to sleep, shower, and, and get off the road for the amount of time you're supposed to, and then get back on the road. So that would be one piece. As far as the difference between the phases, one of the key issues here would be they would want a phase two and full build-out at the same time we did an LID, which we're talking about doing up Lewis Street, where we could do, hook into sewer and water and everything when Lewis Street is, is there, and then we would do a full build-out.
Commissioner Moffett and all other commissioners, just some additional information with respects to the intent of bringing this item to the planning commission this evening as as other business is that there, there has not been a draft ordinance prepared. Staff has not prepared any evaluation of the proposed, well, the initiation of the ordinance itself and any associated elements or factors that may be of interest to the planning commission. And with the respects to tonight's presentation from both staff and the proponent of the initiated request is to seek guidance and direction from the planning commission. If this is an item that you would like to see back before you, then we would like to receive that direction from the planning commission, along with a level of how to prioritize this on the work plan for 2024 with the planning staff. And if we, that is the case, then we will bring back the item for a workshop in front of the planning commission where staff can work with the applicant, along with determining best practices, et cetera, for this particular use to be vetted by the planning, by the planning commission themselves.
Thank you, Jacob. Commissioner Moffett, I see your hand is up. Are you finished? Or you have some follow-on questions?
Follow-up. Okay, follow-up. So with, considering what was said by the gentleman as well as you, Jacob, so would the definition then be better put in the, in the, into the writing from the city? That way, a new person comes in or a new company comes in and doesn't tweak it or try and manipulate it themselves. So I would assume that the city is going to do that, actually, and, and more defining, and you know, yeah, so that was my follow-up.
Yeah, I think, as Jacob said, this is, this is just informational, and I think what they're looking for us as commissioners to say, you know, are we open to a workshop on this item? I think the next stage would be a workshop. And then you go through the whole normal process, which is public hearings, you know, draft text language, you go through, you know, obviously this has to go to city council. So I think it's more guidance from us on whether we're open to hearing this and, you know, what we'd like to see next in this for workshop, if I'm not mistaken, Jacob.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I mean, this is, this is Joey Winter, but that's exactly right. The, the consideration tonight would not be to consider this development or throughout this process, be considered this specific development. This is a question of planning commission of, do you want to add this use to city code to be available citywide in an undetermined number of zoning districts? And if this use is allowed, what sort of standards and what sort of use regulations will we put on specifically? How the, how the use could be carried out? And that's where you get into things like how many nights can somebody stay? What type of screening or, or any number of issues are considered? That would be considered at a future date, and whatever's considered then would apply to this use citywide. We're just looking for guidance as to whether we want to initiate a full process that would go through all those steps.
Yeah, understood. Commissioner Crutchfield, again, you have your hand up. Is there a specific question on, on this?
Well, I think that one of my questions was just answered, so it would be citywide. It would start with property on Lewis, but if there was a change, if there was an amendment or a new.
Now, think about it as, first step is to even consider whether we will allow and add this use. Whether the Lewis Street thing happens is far away, far down the process after that use has been allowed. Correct me if I'm wrong, staff.
Right, but once the use is allowed, it could be citywide.
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
I, in looking at it, in looking at what was provided, I, I, it sounded like something that could be beneficial to the city. There is not adequate parking, in my opinion, for a lot of these big rigs. You see them parked in places where they should not be, even residential, which does violate code. So, and I really liked the idea of it being staffed 24/7, I believe I read. So there's some security there for the clients as well as the community. So I just think a lot more information, as Jacob mentioned, this is just the preliminary, but I think it sounds like potentially a good thing.
And, yeah, I think, I think we can, you know, if there's other questions or feedback, too, I think, you know, the next step would be, you know, my guidance would be, we'd like to know a little more about the the data around the need. So, you know, is there data that shows we do have a truck parking problem? You know, is there data that can back up the need? And priority, the staff has lots on their plate. So for me, in terms of priority, I'd also like to understand, well, before we put this on the staff's plate, what else are we biting off this year? That needs to get, and are there things that are higher on the list for us to get done as a planning commission and for staff to get done in terms of other code stuff that maybe, maybe this isn't the highest priority, but maybe it needs to be on the backlog. But I think some of that data in a workshop would be helpful for me, and if commissioners have other ideas on what they'd like to see in the workshop, that would be helpful, too.
This is Commissioner Crutchfield. I had one last question for Jacob. How, how does this, how does this compare or differ from what we have at King City already in place? I know that there's a, it's been known as a truck stop. I don't know. I'm sure it's not nearly as expansive as this proposal.
Mr. Winter, Mr. Winter will address that question, Commissioner.
Yes, thank you very much, Commissioner. So the difference between this use, and, and we struggle with this as staff, is how to quantify these uses. The district, the distinction between this use, which is a lot specifically devoted to housing trucks there, having truckers sleep in their trucks overnight there, and providing services which support habitating the trucks on that lot, is different than something, it's, first of all, it's different than a truck yard or a parking lot where the truck is brought into a gated area, and then the driver leaves. And it's also different from something like Love's or King City, where that is a, a truck stop, or it's a gas station essentially as the the primary use, and the trucks are there to refuel, get provisions. And then those, there's also other services there, but the, the main distinction here is that the primary use, which is not currently contemplated in Pasco Municipal Code, would be habitating the vehicles for an indeterminate amount of time, certainly overnight. And that, that's where the distinction is, is it's not a place to support truckers or provide a service to truckers. It's a place for a truck to park and be habitated for some term, some period of time.
Thank you.
Excellent. Other commissioners have, Commissioner Lerman?
Yeah, um, this is all a very interesting opportunity for, both for, for Pasco and for these fleet trucking companies and the truck drivers. Appreciate the discussion between commissioners and those who are willing to help answer some questions. One of the questions that I'm thinking about, and I know that today may not be answered because there might be other opportunities going down the road for this process to be carried out, but thinking about environmental impacts, the number of trucks on asphalt, making lubricants, and just would like to learn more about that aspect of it, kind of safeguards to our community. And then second, tagging into what Commissioner Crutchfield was talking about. We talk about the number of trucks that we see throughout, parked throughout the community, trying to be able to find a location to be able to spend the night. I'm wondering how many of those trucks are fleet trucks versus non-fleet trucks, because this, my understanding is for fleet trucks only, and so trying to then conceptualize how that would lower the impact of amount of trucks trying to be able to find locations to overnight within, throughout Pasco.
Yeah, one clear, again, I think the applicant was talking about fleet trucks, but I think the use probably, you know, unless we specify it, it probably wouldn't limit to fleet.
Thank you.
Commissioner Crutchfield, are your, is your hand still up, or is that just left over? And if so, maybe.
I'm sorry, my hand is down. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other commissioners have questions or any guidance? Because it really, the staff is looking for guidance on next steps. I think we've given them some good stuff. I mean, you know, the other one, by the way, I think is also what are the impacts? There's the environmental impact. There's also the traffic impacts on this. And, you know, not just for Lewis Street, but anywhere one of these. There's the sanitation impacts because phase one doesn't include sewer hookup. So, you know, what is the impact on a hot, dry city's day of having one of these trailers? You know, so all of those things, I think, are considerations for citizens, as well as us as commissioners, as we consider a potential use like this. Anyone else have any other guidance for staff? Go ahead, Commissioner Lerman.
Two more possible impacts, too, is, as we've talked about in the past, impacts for light pollution as well as aesthetics.
That's an important one. We live in, this area right now is very light polluted. Even the Benton Franklin Transit Bus Garage creates massive light pollution around central tri-cities, and so those are big factors. So thanks for bringing that up. Okay, anything else? Guidance for staff? All right, well, thank you. All right. Well, thank you for raising this one. What is the next for staff? What is the next steps? Would you are you proposing that maybe you would come back with a workshop item as the next step?
Yeah, Commissioner Cochran, I believe we should be able to put together enough for a workshop at the February Planning Commission meeting. And like all other amendments that have gone through the planning commission process. Take direction and guidance from the planning commission and do what we can to address many questions, concerns, suggestions from the planning commission, obviously. Members of the community as well. So we will plan on bringing this item back at the February Planning Commission meeting and we'll follow up. At that meeting to forward with this given direction from the commission.
Awesome. And and I think you could also, you know, one of the things you could help us too is that. If you in that workshop, if you could give us a feel for the other things on your plate this year and. That maybe we could look at the overall priorities for the things. This is not the only. Code change or amendment or anything. And maybe if we got the bigger picture, we could say how important this is to us.
Absolutely. And we'll make a brief note that actually following the last item under other business this evening.
Okay. Excellent. Well, we'll move on then to our last other business item, which is the planning commission elections. I had sent out some guidance this week or some ideas. I'd also like to open it up to Jacob or any guidance he has on this. And if he wants to kind of give an overview. And I'll so I'll turn it over to you to start and then we can kind of work on the process here to get through it.
Yes. Good evening, commissioners. Again, this this agenda item is with respects to. A selection of chairs, both a chair and a vice chair to serve on the Pasco Planning Commission. The staff report includes the descriptions of both positions. And it is identified per the bylaws of the Pasco Planning Commission that this election take place in the first meeting available in January. And that these and that the commissioners take the assume the positions in at the meeting in February. Other than that, no, no guidance from staff, other than it's been a pleasure to work with both. The chair and the vice chair of the past several years and look forward to continue our work to serve you and members of the community over the coming year.
Excellent. Well, there's a couple, as I mentioned in the email, if you haven't had to read an email, there's a couple of ways we could approach this. You know, there's options to individual nominations, either someone nominating someone else and seconding it. There's also options for people to nominate slates of people. So there's, there's, there's no one right way to do it. I think the other option I said though is you could actually. Commissioner Mendez is not here tonight, so it probably wouldn't be. Good to nominate him and elect him to chair without his permission and participation, but that was one of the options as well. So there's, there's a bunch of different options. I guess the first thing I would like to ask if there are any questions that commissioners have about the roles. The terms for me for staff, as I also mentioned in the mail, this is a role that you have to. Probably likely try to. It's pretty hard for with especially with public hearings, do that remotely. So you have to. Make a concerted effort to be in person as much as possible. Also familiarity and and use of Robert's rules of order and that ceremony. And then, of course, there's the also the difficult citizen and meeting management skills that we all. Have to use from time to time when we have difficult situations with the public or others, you know, it's you have to have that skill as well. So. With that, I'll open it up for questions or feedback about the process or. Any insights that you would like to provide about how you would like to see this or if there are just questions from me or Sam. All right, Commissioner Crutchfield.
Yes, first of all, I just wanted to say that I think that. President Cochran has done an excellent job for the short amount of time I've been on the planning commission. He has great knowledge and ability to run the meetings. I don't know that he is. Interested in continuing the position, but I would be interested in nominating him. Or certainly seeing him continue on that unless others have an interest as well. So. I guess I would wonder if anyone else has any interest on any of these positions currently.
Yeah, I mean, if you would like us, unless anybody has any questions, we can go right to the nominations and. You can, there's nothing wrong with nominating yourself. You can nominate me, you can nominate somebody else. We just need to go through that nomination second and then vote. We'll need a quorum on whatever candidate. So if we end up with a tie or whatever, we'll we'll do might do multiple rounds. I'll tell you what happened. Just so you have an idea of what happened last time is that. We ended up nominating two slates of two people, vice chair, chair comment, chair, vice chair combos. And we just voted between those two slates and one of those slates won over the other one and we were done. That doesn't have to be the way we do it tonight. We could do it lots of ways. So. Oh, I see Commissioner Lerman has her hand up as well. Go ahead.
Yes, so I. Yeah, I would like for us to define, are we going to go ahead and do two slates, a slate approach or go ahead and do one position at a time? My my vote is one position at a time due to the fact that I feel like. Our our team works really well together. Either way, where if you do a slate, it's assumed that these two work well together and these two only work well together. So that's my input.
That's great. And we can do that way. One of the things I suggest, that's one of the movements you could make. You could actually make a motion that we. All only do one position at a time. Somebody could second that. We could vote on it and that would seal our path. So that's an option for you as well.
Okay. I move that we as planning commissioners select one. Planning Commission Chair and Vice Chair at a time.
Do I have a second for that?
A second, Commissioner Moffett.
Commissioner Moffett, all those in favor? Go ahead and raise your hand if you're in favor. Because we don't have the it's harder with the eyes. I'll go ahead and do that. So it looks like as far as I can tell, it is unanimous that we would like to do chair, vice chair, one position at a time. Okay, that's good. Go ahead and take your hands down. That makes our process. A little straightforward. So let's go ahead and start with the chair. I will open the nominations for chair. And again, you can nominate yourself. You can nominate someone else. Just make sure that, you know, we'll have to have a second. For whatever nominations. And then again, we can vote. Commissioner Crutchfield, you're up.
Yes, I vote to nominate Jerry Cochran as the chair. For the planning commission for this upcoming year term.
Thank you very much. We have a nomination for me, Commissioner Cochran, to be the chair and for the next two year term. And we have a second. By Commissioner Lerman. I guess what I also do is are there any other nominations for chair at this time? Commissioner Crutchfield, you saw your hand up. I assume that's leftover. Okay.
No, it was leftover. I guess we should have asked you if you were interested in continuing.
You know, I'm happy. I'm happy to do it for another term, but I also want to make sure that I make room for anybody else that has a desire.
Thank you.
Do we have any other nominations for chair? All right, I hear none. I guess the question for you then is I will open up the vote. All those in favor. Of Commissioner Cochran for the next two year term, please raise your hand. Okay, all those, I I don't know that we need to do all those opposed. We we do have a quorum. So I guess it has passed. And and staff, by the way, Kristen, let me know if you're having any troubles recording because I know we need to record these votes. It looks like it was. It's moved and seconded and it's been voted, I think unanimous that I will continue. So I appreciate, by the way, I thank you for your your vote and your confidence. I'm happy to do it. I enjoy working with all of you. So thank you. For for that second tour. Let's go ahead then and open up the nominations for vice chair. And again, vice chair is, you know, obviously, I don't, I think we have had a number of times where I think over the last two years, once or twice where Commissioner Mendez. Did serve when I was out or something happened. So that's always a important thing. The other thing is it has elected vice chair. If there's ever a time when you would like to take the meeting just as a matter of request, that's also something you can do. So. I will open the nominations for vice chair. Commissioner Moffett.
I'd like to nominate Kim Lerman as vice chair.
We have a move for Commissioner Lerman as vice chair. Commissioner Crutchfield, is that a second?
That is a second.
It's been moved. Sorry, go ahead.
Should she be willing to take the position? Yes, that is.
I was going to ask that question next. It's been moved and seconded. Commissioner Lerman, is that a a position you were willing to serve for the next two years? Your hand is up. Does that mean yes?
Yes, that does.
All right, it's been moved and seconded to elect Commissioner Lerman as vice chair. All those in favor, please raise your hand. We again have a unanimous vote, so thank you for that and welcome. Commissioner Lerman to the vice chair role. I know you'll do great. You'll be great. And and as I said, please tell me anytime you would like to take the meeting. And we can always share that responsibility. But you also made it very easy on us tonight where I think this was a lot easier than last time. So. Everybody wanted to get done for the snow night, so. All right, staff, you have any, are we good with the elections? Do you feel like our obligations have been met according to the bylaws?
Absolutely.
Well, if that, is there any other business?
I just wanted to briefly touch on the the aspects related to the 2020 24 2024 work plan and just touch briefly that. We will be initiating the development of our next periodic update of the Pasco Comprehensive Plan. Several of the commissioners may recall this process that played out several years ago that did last several years. In terms of its duration, where this is the state mandated update to the Growth Management Act and our comprehensive plan. This will be a fairly extensive update. So as we begin initiating both the scoping. Of the plan as well as the significant involvement of the public, we do plan to provide consistent updates. With the planning commission as we move forward with that process. I also want to share with the planning commission that. As part of that comprehensive plan update, staff does recommend that we consider amendments to the comprehensive plan, future land use map. As part of that 2026 update. So instead of pursuing the annual amendment, we will still be. Welcome to receiving amendments, but they will be considered comprehensively as part of the 2026 update. And that is to ensure that forecasting and any evaluations that take place based on utilities and infrastructure, et cetera. From the land uses are considered of a of a land use that has been. Determined by the planning commission, obviously counsel before final adoption. I also want to share that with the recent adoption of several major planning efforts, in particular, the Housing Action Implementation Plan. Staff will be working with various stakeholders over the coming months to continue identifying updates necessary to the Pasco Municipal Code and any other. Associated aspects of the code that need refinements. While we've made a lot of progress over several years. There's still a lot in our code that is yet to be. To be touched, quite frankly. So we'll be working with our stakeholder groups across the community and in the region. And with planning commission to bring those to you throughout the year. And that wraps up the brief. Miscellaneous like discussion this evening. And with that, I have no other items for planning commission this evening.
Thank you, Director Gonzalez. With that, hearing no other items on the agenda, I would entertain a. Motion and a second to adjourn. Go ahead and raise your hand if you want. I see Commissioner, let me make sure I got this correct. I see a motion potentially from Commissioner Moffett and a second from Commissioner Lerman to adjourn. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Commissioner Lerman, also?
Correct.
Excellent. It's been moved and seconded and tonight's meeting is adjourned at 7:21 PM. Thank you, everyone. I hope to see you next month in person if there's hopefully no snow.
Thank you.